All right, so I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Oregon City Commission to order for Wednesday, October 5th, 2016. Call or roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Ide.
Here.
Commissioner Mengeleberg.
Here.
Mayor Holliday.
Here. If you please stand and join me in the flagpole.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, starting off, we have 16-562 Metro update. My friend and colleague, Councilor Collette.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. It's great to be down here.
Welcome.
In any minute now, we'll get my presentation up.
Yep.
I have a whole bunch of paper here tonight. Some of it I left in the back for folks, just as an update on our levy. There's information back there. And also, our most recent regional snapshot. Let me move right to that one first. You might remember that we've been doing a series of snapshots of where we are in the region. What's our economy looking like? What's our population, transportation? The most current one is called Changing Communities, and it is about how our community is changing, how, I think, my generation, we're still really mostly white in this region, but the young generations, particularly in school, are now a fairly substantial number of minority kids. Some schools are 40 percent or more minority. And that has really important implications for our whole society, but I think particularly for job creation and education. I sort of think of this kind of personally, as I'm somebody approaching Social Security, and I look behind me, and I want to make sure that the young people coming on behind me, who are going to pay my Social Security, have good jobs and are well-educated. I don't care what color they are. I want them to be smart, well-educated, and having good jobs. And I think that's sort of the bottom line about why it's important to look at our region's demographics and to make sure we're creating opportunities for everybody. The other big, important thing going on right now at Metro is our regional transportation planning process. And we do this every four years. Some of you are newer than others, so this might be the first one that some of you have gone through. I noticed the other day at our most recent regional leadership forum, Commissioner Mengeleberg was there. And I hope others of you can join us as we go into the next round of these. What we're trying to do is get a sense from regional leaders in elected office, but also from the business community, from nonprofits, from just the community at large, of what are your transportation priorities? How do you think we're going to build the next transportation system for the next 30 years or so? And at the last leadership forum, we really talked a lot about how are we going to pay for it? And we had some really good guest speakers in to talk about how places like Seattle, Los Angeles, Alameda County have voted in tax increases or other fees that allow them to build a better transit system, as well as roads and street projects. So we'll be moving forward on that. You've all been at least somewhat aware that we're in the midst of the regional flexible funds process. And this is the funds that Metro gets on behalf of the whole region. We call them flexible funds because they're not specifically for road projects. They're used most for things like, a little bit for transit, but for also bikes, sidewalks, those kinds of priorities in the region. Last, in May, we went through a big public process and adopted kind of a framework for how we want to prioritize those dollars. We're now in the stage where we are just getting technical evaluation completed, and we'll be moving into public comment on the kinds of projects that are being submitted by local communities. And I'm guessing that Oregon City has some in the mix. You usually do, so that's one to keep mindful of as well. A lot going on in the region right now in Parks and Nature. Shealem Ridge out near Banks and Cornelius, it's one of our larger areas. It's about 1,100 acres. We're in the middle now of doing a master plan similar to what we did for Newell Creek Canyon. There are about three options for how to do what people have said they want to see happening at Shealem Ridge. So those are on our website. We'll be moving through that process over the coming months. River Island is another huge project of ours. It's on the Clackamas River. I think I mentioned this in an earlier update, where in the '96 flood, there was a gravel quarry in the Clackamas River that basically got washed out. And the land that was left was very damaged in terms of being able to be used for either gravel quarrying or salmon runs. The quarry owners donated, and partially sold, but mostly donated, the land to Metro as habitat. And we've been using our levy dollars to restore that land. We're being kind of careful about how we do it, because the river has a mind of its own, and we don't want to spend millions of dollars putting some kind of structures in place, only to have the river wash them out again. So we do what's called adaptive management. We make some changes. We watch what happens. We have a lot of experience with this now, and the goal is to be able to restore salmon runs and salmon habitat on this island and in the Clackamas River. It's right across from Barton Park. I think that's where most people see it, from Barton Park. But it's a pretty significant part of the Clackamas River. It was the number-one priority for ODFW in terms of salmon habitat restoration, and so when we were able to pass the Parks Levy in 2013, that became one of our big priority projects. So that's well underway. And then again, just to remind you, and I appreciate that some of you endorsed individually the levy extension that we have on the November ballot. This is not a new levy. This is just extending the existing levy of 9.6 cents on the thousand. So it ends up being $20 to $25 a year for a home assessed at $200,000 to $250,000. So the outcome of that is really millions of dollars going into restoring habitat, keeping our streams, our water clean. The Shealem Ridge, for example, has seven headwaters of seven streams, just on that parcel of land. So keeping that habitat healthy has huge impacts all around the region, and frankly, outside the region. So the levy will help projects like that. It also provides a lot of the money that goes to nature and neighborhood grants, and I know Oregon City has benefited a lot from those as well. So I encourage you, and whenever you can, to encourage people to vote yes on, I think it's number 26178. And as I said, there's information on what we've accomplished in the back. That's something that Metro staff could put out. It's just the information. It's not an advocacy piece of paper, so you can see that in the back. I don't know if I need to update you much on the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, because I'm home with this project. It's your baby. We do have, our Friends group is up and running. We have a new interim executive director. I think you all know her, Shelley Perini. She and Chris Anderson, who's been our interim director, they're going to share this, at least for the next, I think, until July 1st, at which point we hope to have raised some money to actually hire a full-time executive director. That's on the private side, the fundraising side. We also have been just moving forward. We have a tentative date in early November, I think it's November 17th, when the design team will be back in town and we'll have a big public event. I'll get back to you for sure on that date, but I think that was the first date that they were looking at, having people get together. Tony, you would know, is that?
I don't think we finalized the date yet.
Okay, you didn't finalize it. Okay, so don't anybody pencil it in, don't ink it in. But that will be a big public event, probably up at Clackamas Community College, where they'll have some of the design imagery and some of the options that they're looking at for the site, based on all the meetings we've had. And you might remember, we had the last big public meeting here, and had over 800 people over at the, oh, was it Abernethy? And then during the first city event this summer, we had, again, hundreds of people, more than 600 people came to the booth and actually made recommendations. So we interacted with a whole bunch more people there. So the design team has all that information, and we will start seeing the results of all that work in November. I'm really excited to see that. We've been working a lot on regional equity, and not just because those are the people that are going to support us in our old age, but also because it really is critical to the economy. And I wanted to tell you about one particular project that we've just initiated, and it's called, we call it C2P2, but it's Construction Career Pathways Project. And the idea is that a number of businesses and other local jurisdictions approached Metro and said, "Look, you know, when we do a construction project, we have either federal guidelines or our own guidelines or state guidelines that say that we have to hire a certain number of minorities to work on some of these projects. We can't find a lot of minorities to work on these projects. We need to figure out how to find them, how to educate them, get them trained up, and get them into the job field." And the communities turned to us and asked us to help coordinate that. So I'm really excited that we're doing this. We've just kicked it off. We have hired staff to help do this work, and we're already beginning to create some opportunities that will get people into the workforce, get them trained, and get them into jobs. Because what I'm sure you're experiencing, we're experiencing at Metro, is that we can't get enough construction crews out on the projects. We have the reverse of what we had during the recession. I'm not sure what the word would be for an alternate to a recession, but we are moving very quickly. We're trying to build projects very quickly. And because there's so much construction going on, it's actually costing us longer, taking longer, because we don't have a trained workforce. So we're particularly, in this instance, targeting minorities who we need to have on-site on some of these projects in order to meet targets for the number of minority employees. The Convention Center Hotel, this is as close to a finished design as we have so far. We're into design phase. We hope to have city permitting completed in the next month, which will be almost record time. We've been working very close with Portland City to get the design review and permitting completed. It can take forever. And again, sort of going back to the last theme, the longer you wait, the more expensive it is to build, so we're trying to get this going as fast as possible. We think now that we will have a groundbreaking date of around May of 2017. So, moving forward. And there's our new baby polar bear, Nora. Elephant Land's open in December, and I've invited you all to have a kind of behind-the-scenes tour, and we're putting that together along with, Mayor Holliday asked us to see if the electeds from Gladstone would also be interested. So we'll be working with your staff and the city of Gladstone to try to find a time when you could come behind the scenes and have the tour. The story about Nora, and I don't know how many of you know her story, she's kind of internationally famous. She was born last November, and was, the problem with polar bears is even in the wild, whether they're born in the wild or in captivity, half of them die very quickly. A polar bear that is abandoned by her mother has almost zero chance, literally zero chance of surviving. At the Columbus Zoo, when Nora was born, and her mother rejected her after she was only five days old, the zoo staff decided to try to raise her by hand. Previous to this, only five polar bears raised by hand had lived. So, again, the odds were very close to zero. I would encourage you to go online, and you could just Google Nora the Polar Bear, because there's wonderful, wonderful videos of her being hand-raired by this group of people at the Columbus Zoo in Ohio. And when she became old enough, she couldn't be reintroduced to the other polar bears, because they're now also breeding. And so they were looking for a zoo that could take her on, and we're about to build this fantastic new polar bear habitat. We said, "It's a little bit early. We don't have it yet, but we'd be happy to have Nora." So she is now at our zoo. She's been in quarantine, which is standard practice when animals come from other zoos. They're kept in quarantine long enough to make sure they're not going to bring in any diseases. But she'll be coming out of quarantine soon, and I'm hoping that when you all have your tour of the zoo, we can all meet Nora. She is really a gorgeous little thing. She's just adorable. I'm sort of fallen in love with her. If I could bring her home, I would. She's only about 180 pounds right now, but she'll get closer to, well, she'll probably get over 1,000 pounds by the time she's full grown. And she will be reared partly by our surviving polar bear, who is the oldest polar bear now that we know of in the world, Tassel, who is one of our twins, Conrad, her brother, passed away this fall. So we're hoping that she will be a good friend for Tassel, and also that Tassel will be able to mentor her and train her, because Tassel's the first polar bear in the world to volunteer to have blood drawn, so we can actually do her maintenance tests on her. Most zoos have to anesthetize their animals in order to do any kind of testing. Tassel will hold her paw out, and they've actually marked on her paw where the needle goes. And you just have to keep the paw handy and the face full of fish, and she will keep putting her paw out there. So she's the first polar bear in the world to have this kind of training and to be responsive to tests like this, and it's amazing in terms of their survival, the amount of information we can get from her voluntarily. I could spend the whole evening talking about Tassel. I won't do that. She's amazing polar bear, though. We do a lot of work with her to learn about polar bears in the wild, and she's just very responsive. So we hope she'll be kind of a good surrogate mom to Nora. And that's kind of the big picture. I zipped through it, because I don't want to take your whole evening, and I see you have a crowd behind me, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Anybody?
No. Thank you, Collette.
Thank you.
Good seeing you guys.
Thanks for coming.
You're welcome, and I hope to introduce you to Nora very soon.
Right.
Got a couple of county commissioners that wouldn't mind introducing to Nora.
Oh, God.
So next up is Clackamas Fire District 1.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Mike Corless. I'm Division Chief with Clackamas Fire, and in the back of the room, I have Truck 15 from the John Adams Station, just up the street from us. Tonight, I'm going to give you some information on the annexation vote that's coming in November, and then I'll also give you a little bond update of projects that are happening in Oregon City. The annexation vote is between Boring Fire District and Clackamas Fire District Number 1. Little background on that, Clackamas Fire started its relationship with Boring Fire District in 2009 through some intergovernmental agreements for training and volunteer services. And then in 2014, we went into a contract of services for full fire protection, similar to what the Fire District did with the city in 2003. Both boards have met multiple times over this annexation issue, and they've decided it's time to put it to a vote of the people. And so in November, there are three ballots on the docket for vote. Boring residents have to vote on two. Those majors are 3-493, which is the dissolution of the Boring Fire District. And then Measure 3-503 is annexing those properties into the Fire District. Clackamas Fire District Number 1 voters have to vote on one major, and that is 3-494. And the district has to vote to say, "Yes, we want to take these properties in." All three majors have to have an affirmative vote in order for this to happen. If one of them doesn't pass, we'll continue doing what we're doing right now. We'll continue the contract, and we'll move down the road and look at options as we go forward. Benefits to Boring Fire, we're going to see some increased staffing in the Damascus area, and it also helps with some of their administrative services. It narrows that down. Benefits for Clackamas Fire, it helps us in our east part of our Fire District, in the Carver Spring Water Road area, for response times and stuff like that. So that's the nutshell for annexation. I can answer any questions for you. If you don't have any, I'll move right into the bond updates for you, and then I'll be done, and you guys can move on. So bond updates, we have a few projects here in Oregon City that are happening, as you know, and I thank you, the Commission, very much for approving the temporary structure at Station 16, which was closed in May, reopened again in August with the temporary structure. We are in interviews tomorrow for finalizing our architect for rebuilding Station 16. And that will be from bond proceeds that were approved by the voters in 2015. Along with Station 16, a new Station 16, we're also working on the rough of Station 15, the John Adams Station right here. And there will be a new fire engine in the South End Fire Station, coming soon, probably sometime shortly after the first of the year. So that's the update. I can answer any questions. If not, I thank you for your time.
I think you said the ladder truck was...
There will be a new ladder truck here. It will not fit in this station. It'll end up in the Hilltop Station at some point. That ladder truck will be here probably late spring, so we're going to have to do some maneuvering as we build the station and figure that out, so.
I want to come up and watch Commissioner Shaw climb the ladder once, just for fun.
There you're right.
I did it in, yeah, and you won't be able to walk for two days, because I wasn't able to, so.
Yeah. But, so this ladder truck here will be leaving, or will it still be one? So what's going to be here when it's all said and done?
All said and done, there'll probably be an engine here, because an engine will still fit in here where the ladder truck. We're going from the type of ladder truck that's here now to a tillered ladder truck, so it doesn't fit. It's too long to fit in this building.
You say "tillered," what do you mean?
There's a steering wheel in the back.
Oh, okay.
So we have a driver in the front, and then we have a person in the back that's steering the back part of the...
So the ladder is longer, then?
The ladder is the same length.
Oh, okay.
Better compartment storage, we can carry more tools.
Okay. Any else? All right, thanks, Chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're on to citizen comments, and citizens are allowed up to three minutes to present information relevant to the city, but not listed as an item on the agenda. So if you signed up and you found something on the agenda for that agenda item, Mr. Guile.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Greetings, Mayor and Commissioners and everybody else. I'm here tonight to invite you to be judges at our scarecrow contest down on Main Street in Oregon City. We're looking for official type of individuals who aren't favoring any particular group. Our event's called "A Nightmare on Main Street: A Gathering of Ghouls." It's going to happen on Saturday, October 22nd, between noon and 5:00 p.m. And you may have seen posters in a lot of the businesses downtown Portland. Excuse me, Oregon City! I can't remember the last time I went to Portland, sorry. I was thinking of that because of customers today.
Probably the Rose Parade.
Yeah, the Rose Parade. So this event's going to include the scarecrow contest, and it's open to anyone, children, adults, and we hope to have a good showing on it. It's also a Coffin Cruisers Cruise Inn. That's a gathering of retired, yet pretty strange and unique heursers. I have one. We have another car club attending called The Driven Dead. They take cars older than 1940 and fix them up. We have a face painter coming. We have local Halloween artists who do their own work, and they're going to be signing their own work. Our own Rocky Smith will be talking about his ghost tours in his conference. And that's not in Portland. My hearse, Hersela, she was in Portlandia this year. She'll be there for photo ops for anybody. It's amazing when I take her to car shows like Seaside and elsewhere, how many people want to take their picture next to a hearse. I guess it's, you don't want a picture next to a hearse on a regular occasion.
It's better to be next to it than into it.
Exactly. Well, you saw it up at National Night Out, too. Channel 2 News picked up on it. We're also going to have that same life-size puppet as walked in the Teddy Bear Parade, Cobb, the one that speaks, and sounds of crows flying around him and all that, so. The concept behind this event is to draw attention to Main Street south of 7th. Most Main Street events happen north of 7th on Main Street, because traffic, you can't block the state highway there. So we find that traffic moves so fast over the bridge and out Highway 99, that we tend to get very few people stopping by our smaller shops down there. And in effect, with the new sign code, it has limited how we market ourselves. In fact, after I was on Fox News this morning, on the affiliate Channel 12, and also on More Good Day Oregon, I had customers from Gresham, Sandy, Estacada, Salem, Twallad, Hillsborough, Salem, and even the Dawls. And the most common thread of comment I heard is that they were driving up and down Main Street trying to find me, because they could not see. I have a small opening of that awning down there, and so you can't see that I've actually got a store there. So this is my second time on the news. I tend to bring nearly as much attention as the courthouse. And I'm also, with a good side. I'm also on the cover of Oregon City News again today, so I do tend to bring a lot of attention to Oregon City. I'm the only one in the Pacific Northwest that's year-round, and that's what On the Go with Joe was talking about. So for those listening on TV, the scarecrow contest is open to anyone, young and old. There's an entry form and a deadline for entering, so we know how many to plan on. You can find it on our website at www.gouggallery.com. Thanks. I hope you all come down and be judges.
Thanks, Mr. Guile.
Thank you.
I was on the front page of the Oregon City News, too, by the way.
I saw that. Mine was at the top, though.
Yours is above the fold.
Above the fold. Still above the fold. That's all that really matters.
Thanks a lot.
So I have a question for, maybe Amber can answer this. Do we not have one of those, like, you know, graphic maps that has little buttons that show where everybody is in Oregon City, like on Main Street and stuff, as far as businesses are concerned?
It's Jonathan.
Yeah, you know, you see them like at Seaside or whatever, where, you know, it's the big picture of the city, and it shows all the little...
You referring to like the fun ones that have the balloons on them?
Yeah, yeah.
No, there is not one currently in circulation.
Okay. Are we working on that?
Right now, I'm in the middle of a political season. I don't know about you.
All right, thank you.
She's not.
Good answer. Good answer.
William Gifford, Father Time.
Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. So happy to see Phil here. I'm bored.
Thank you.
Tickle silly about last night, we had our Hillendale Neighborhood Association meeting, and I'm the land use chair for that association. And for the last, hmm, year or so, Tower Vista Neighborhood Association has been meeting with us, because they have been inactive due to lack of leadership, in a similar fashion to Hazel Grove Whistling Farms, having to meet jointly with the South End Association. I've been to every neighborhood association meeting and worked for three years to try to get all those neighborhoods reactivated, and it bothers me when they fall into quiet status. Yeah. So I'm delighted to say that we did, or Tower Vista, did elect a new chair, vice chair, and a treasurer last night. So the chair is Vern Johnson. The vice chair, there was a lot of humor involved, and I think some names were switched around. It's either Georgia Regan or Karen somebody else, but, sorry, I don't know that name. And the secretary is Monica Mumper. And the executive committee of Hillendale is going to be coaching them on how to get their neighborhood association started. For a while, they will continue to meet with us quarterly, but it'll be nice to have another neighborhood association participating in the CIC and basically being engaged in the neighborhood association, so that's what I wanted to report.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Thanks, William.
Thank you.
Once again, Executive Director of the Oregon City Chamber, Amber Holvec.
Thank you, William. Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. I'm Amber Holvec, Director for the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce. And this evening, in terms of my citizen comment, I wanted to let folks know that last night we had a, what I felt was a great state representative forum, hosting candidates for six, or, excuse me, districts 39 and 40. And good attendance, good response from both chamber members and other community members at large. And this was held at the VFW Hall. To those who were able to attend, thank you, thank you. And for those who were not able to, we did have Clackamas Community College's media center folks there. I do have a video clip that I'll be uploading soon, so that others can view that as well. And then tomorrow night, we feature none other than the Oregon City City Commissioner candidates, who will be sharing a little bit about themselves... candidates, who will be sharing a little bit about themselves, and so the community is encouraged to be part of that at 5:30, again, at the Three Rivers VFW Hall. We will hear from two of our city commissioner candidates, who are running an oppose this season, for position two, Nancy Ide, and for position four, Renata Mengelberg. And then, position three, both Paul Espy and Frank O'Donnell will be chatting with us. And so, we're very excited to have that take place. The other part that we will be hosting, though, is a presentation on Oregon City's own Measure 3-514 regarding the limitation of urban renewal funds in Oregon City. And I did want to let you know that the "No on 3-514" campaign will be present, however, the measure proponents have declined our invitation twice, which is unfortunate. And now, moving...so, we're turning that page. We're moving on to another topic. Once again, our chamber will be hosting a Oregon City Walk, and we'd encourage you to be part of that city walk. It is next week, so if you have about two and a half hours free, it'd be great to have you join us. I have a little packet for each of you. One is a promotional about the event, and the other is actually our completed report from the June event. And I will get on a future agenda for the city commission to actually go through the report with you, but I wanted to give you a sneak peek. And my appreciation to Wells Fargo, who's our presenting sponsor, and questions?
Ready?
We're good, Amber.
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate the hard work the chamber does.
Thank you.
And emails.
First off, I'm sure you guys are never concerned about the deterioration of McLaughlin Neighborhood Association.
No, I think it's a pretty safe bet.
Yeah.
I have a real concern about homeless in Oregon City, and I don't know...I don't have any suggestions of what to do about it, but I was at my church this morning for church service, and there were two men sleeping on the porch. I know the neighborhood has called the police, and I know that probably they're responding, but they couldn't even come back, and the police don't have time to...
What church do you attend?
That St. Paul's Episcopal on...and I happen to know these two guys, because we serve a free dinner on Thursday nights at our church. And so, you know, I was nice to them, in that I told them I cared about them. I didn't have any answer. And they said, "It's raining." And, you know, our Father's Heart has this wonderful reputation for serving homeless people, but they're open 24 hours a week. They're closed Monday. They're open from 3:00 and 9:00 in the morning until 3:00 in the afternoon. That's 24 hours a week. And it invites homeless to our town, but it really doesn't do enough to take care of them. It's a wonderful service for what it offers, but it's certainly too short of duration. And then also, you guys have all heard this before, but I want to have some consideration for some kind of public toilets. We can't have people's yards, which happens, being the toilets, those other 18 hours a day.
Thank you, Rita.
Thank you.
Mom says hi, by the way.
Thanks, Rita.
I know that. Tell her I'm still gonna get over there.
Okay. Okay, so, that's it for citizen comment, right?
Yep.
Okay. Everybody okay with the agenda?
Yes.
Yeah? So, before we get started any farther, I would like to ask Mr. Geisman about the email that we got today. Does that change anything as far as our third agenda item?
Thank you, Mayor, and I apologize for my lateness, but I looked at the email, and I'm not certain I agree with her reading of it, but I also see where she's coming from. You know, it's not exactly the most straightforwardly written one. It's sort of, you've got this that exempts that, that comes out of this, and, you know, how do you read it? I think what it does mean is that it's an area where some significant ambiguity in the law, and the question really is, do we, with that ambiguity, do we want to take on the possibility to be in a test case about the ambiguity or not? Because, you know, if in fact we were to not regulate outdoor grows, there'd be no test case to worry about. You know, the question is whether or not there's a state law that says you can't do that, and so if we do, then we become a possible target for a lawsuit about whether or not we get there.
Okay, so you don't have a solid yes or no?
I think it's...
Then we'll leave it on the agenda. We'll move forward.
Okay.
Okay, so, we're on to PC 16-099, first reading ordinance 16-1008, time, place, and manner regulations for marijuana businesses. Ms. Turway.
Thank you very much. So, on the November ballot, we'll be asking Oregon City voters if they would like to have marijuana businesses within the city. In preparation for that, we've spent the last six months working with the community to figure out where the businesses should be located and other time, place, and manner requirements. Through that process, we have had a couple of open houses, three online surveys, and a slew of planning commission and now city commission hearings. To tell you more about this regulations, we have our planner, Pete Walter.
Thank you, Mayor, City Commissioners. So, let's see, back on September 21st, we were gonna have a first reading on this ordinance, but for various reasons, we are doing it tonight. The draft regulations are based on extensive public input and input from the Oregon Liquor Control Commission, from our city attorney, and various other reviews, including the League of Oregon Cities. As these business regulations have been discussed at the planning commission and city commission hearings, you've resolved a lot of the issues that we had questions for. And we're confident as staff that these are good and reasonable regulations that are fair and protect Oregon City businesses, as well as Oregon City residents. The final issue for resolution tonight is whether or not to allow or prohibit marijuana businesses in the Canema National Register Historic District, which, as we've discussed at previous hearings, is the area zoned HC Historic Commercial along 99E. And we have got input back from the Canema Neighborhood Association in the form of draft minutes, which are in your packet, and those draft minutes indicate that the Canema Neighborhood Association is supportive of prohibiting marijuana businesses in that zone. So, as this moves forward, we've prepared two separate amendments to Chapter 1729, which is the Historic Commercial District, depending on whether you determine whether or not to do that. And that is pretty much all I have to discuss. We do have some testimony in the record already from Karen Blaha of Canema Neighborhood Association, and there was a time...it was time-sensitive for them to get this before the Canema...before the Neighborhood Association, and so we weren't able to get you those minutes in the first hearing, but we have them now. So, with that, we are recommending approval of Ordinance 161008, planning file LE 16-0001. Thank you.
So, the ordinance as written contains a prohibition or not for Canema?
The ordinance does not mention Canema at all. So, the ordinance is written whether or not the code goes into effect, and we have separate code sections which you can decide on.
Oh, I see.
To be clear, the code sections are part of the ordinance. They're essentially of two alternatives in the ordinance, one that includes Canema, one that doesn't. And so, the question you have before you is whether or not to include those sections that prohibit the regulate...prohibit marijuana use in Canema or not.
Okay.
Yep.
So, with that, I will open the public hearing, and we have at least three folks who wish to speak, Mr. Haney and Ms. Blaha.
Mr. Haney? Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, everybody else.
Wait till the microphone can hear you.
Excuse me. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, everybody else. My name's Geo Haney. I live in Oregon City here for about 12, 15 years now. I've been fortunate enough to be in this marijuana industry since it started a little bit before. Unfortunately, our city has chosen to basically fight its tooth and nail to have this business, this industry here in our city. I seem to be giving a lot of money to Multnomah County, where my business is, and I would like to bring that money to our city. I believe it would help our schools, our safety services, and hopefully we can all get on board and make that happen. That's what I have to say.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Blaha.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Karen Blaha. I live at 514 Fourth Avenue in Canema, 97045. I would like to make sure that you understand I'm speaking tonight as an individual and not a representative of the Canema Neighborhood Association. You already have that position on record. Since this discussion is already at the stage of an ordinance, my comments are likely futile. Nevertheless, I have two important points, and this has nothing to do pro or con marijuana. Since the mayor reported a conversation with a Colorado mayor who said they hadn't had any problems with dispensaries, with the exception of armed robberies, have you looked at the proximity of homes? This is a dense residential area, and we have many children here. Number two, because Canema holds within it a federally designated National Historic District, and why businesses are certainly allowed, marijuana is a federally prohibited drug. Are marijuana sales federally allowed in National Historic Districts? Do you have a documented answer to that question? Might we be in danger of losing our National Historic designation? So, when you vote on the ordinance tonight concerning putting dispensaries in Canema, I respectfully request that you excise Canema from that inclusion, and vote no on putting marijuana dispensaries in Canema. Thanks so much for your time and attention. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jane Grimm.
So, my comment is...
Good.
Hi, good evening.
So, name and city of residence for the record, please.
Jane Grimm, Oregon City. So, my comment is not directed towards dispensaries, but rather towards the personal growing in one's personal property.
Well, then, you're in the wrong spot.
Okay.
So, we have...this is coming up...
I understand that. That's why I sat...you wanted me to sit down and speak, so I...that's why I got up here and did that.
I apologize, but you were listed in the wrong place.
Okay. Can you run here or come back here?
So, is there anybody else wishing to comment? Then I will close the public hearing, and we can have a discussion. Who wants to go first? Wow, crickets.
Well, I'm agreeing with everything, but the...I'm still leaning towards excluding Number one, it's a National Historic Area. Number two, it's the entry to our city. So, I worry about our image. You know, we've worked a long time on getting our city to where it's at, and for me, you know, that's an image thing. So, when you start putting a dispensary right there at the entry to our city.
Any else? Mr. Smith?
I'm supposed to be hitting the thing.
Yeah, I know. I was waiting for somebody to do that, because you guys aren't doing it, so.
Yeah, I did it.
Why isn't that up?
I don't know. Oh, because I didn't hit the right thing. All right, I think we have...one of the reasons you're not hearing a huge discussion tonight is because we've been having this discussion for quite a long time. We have already come to an agreement on buffers and what neighborhoods these facilities will be allowed with, if the voters choose to do that. We're just coming down now to the two real last questions, one of which is the one we're talking about now, Canema Neighborhood, and then the next topic after this. Canema is a National Historic District, and that's what really makes this stand out, different from other neighborhoods in the city. It is one that I think stands out even more than that, being that it is the extr...it's adjacent to the Willamette Falls site and what the future of the city is going to be. All of us believe that we should have places in our city for these type of businesses, but this neighborhood probably, in my opinion, is not the best place for it. And so, I have been pretty adamant about that, just because of the importance of the National Heritage of that district, and so I agree with the prohibition in Canema.
And I support the views of Commissioner Shaw and Commissioner Smith.
Commissioner Ide?
I will also support that view, but the main reason is because of the Willamette Falls, the future development of the Willamette Falls area, not necessarily because the Canema residents are choosing to not have it in their neighborhood because of what it will do to their neighborhood. I think that any citizen in our city could say that about their neighborhood, that they do not want it, you know, a retail business near their homes. And so, that didn't have...that argument didn't weigh that much for me, but the fact that it is near the future development of Willamette Falls did for me. So, that's...I'm in agreement with you on that.
Okay, thank you. Well, generally speaking, I get the argument that this is the gateway to the city, but, you know, I drive that road at least twice a day, going back and forth to our shop in Camby, and it's not the most attractive thing now.
No.
So, you know, moving forward, any kind of redevelopment of some of those key buildings along 99 and Canema would be a good thing. The only other thing I worry about is, once we cross the edge of this slope, where does it lead? You know, does Canema get special attention for something else that we aren't even anticipating now? Typically, we make code for our entire city as a whole, not individual neighborhoods or sections.
Unless it's in a Historic District.
Well, yeah...
We have different rules.
But the rules there are mainly for exterior building, period. So, anyway, I know I'm losing this deal, so I get that, but I want to be clear that my position is, is that if the citizens of Oregon City vote to have marijuana businesses, that it should be as fair as possible for everyone to participate. That's my...that's my only thing. I'm neither pro nor against, but we have to treat all of our businesses as closely to the same as we can. So, I'm done. Is there a motion?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Oh, Mr. Conklin, I apologize.
Just want to clarify one thing, that we do...it is allowed in the Willamette Falls District.
Right.
You know, but not knowing what that district's gonna look like yet, if the river walks categorized as a park and you have a 250-foot...so, I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't a misunderstanding, that we somehow excluded it. a misunderstanding, that we somehow excluded it for Willamette Falls. Right now, we have the zoning, but we don't exactly know where streets are going to be, buildings are going to be, parks are going to be, so that will impact that district a little bit differently. So I just want to point that out.
Okay, thanks, sir.
I'll move for a first reading of ordinance number 16-008, Time, Place, Manor Regulations for Marijuana Businesses, including Chapter 1726 HC Prohibit in Kanema.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Shaw, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion?
We got a reading.
Ordinance number 16-1008, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City adopting time, place, and manner regulations for marijuana businesses, including medical marijuana processors and dispensaries, as well as recreational marijuana processors, dispensaries, producers, wholesalers, and retailers.
Colorado, please.
Commissioner Hyde?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
And Commissioner Mingleberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. Where are our buttons?
They are right here.
Okay. Moving on. So, am I right there? Yeah. So this would be the 16552, the second reading of ordinance 16-1010, adopting a ban on outdoor cultivation of marijuana. The question I have tonight is, do we want to, there are people here that are going to want to talk about it, so I think we should allow those folks to testify, but I think we should put this off until we have a more, to give our attorney an opportunity to investigate the information that we got earlier today.
Correct.
Is everybody okay with that?
Okay.
Okay. So I'm just going to go ahead and drop right into, right into testimony on this. I got to move my computer screen here. So we have several folks here to testify. I'm going to call you two at a time, and I apologize if I butcher your name, Ryan LaFrenier and Cyrus Ficini. Ryan, you're up.
Hello. Hi, my name's Ryan. I live in Oregon City. I'm here to talk about the outdoor cultivation. I saw on your little book thing back there that it's listed as a site nuisance. I don't know what that is, and I don't know why somebody's looking in my backyard and why they are offended by what they see in my backyard. So I don't know what that is, and I don't know, it seems to me that it's a great overstepping of the government to tell me what I can and cannot grow in my backyard, when it was voted by the people of the great state of Oregon that we have passed this law and that we have given ourselves this right. And I would really like to see this whole thing repealed and a lot less government stepping in my backyard and observing, you know, what I do and when I do it and how I do it. The other thing is, as you're forcing people to grow indoors, it, you're incurring them to make costs of lights, of fans, of having a place in their home, or making their home or a shed a target of a burglary, instead of somebody coming in and saying, oh, I'm going to take a couple of apples off the tree. Now you're inciting burglaries and whatnot, and putting people's lives in danger by forcing them to grow in an indoor location as opposed to just growing outdoors. And it's making people pay for things when the earth provides it. The earth provides the dirt, it provides the wind, it provides the sun. So I really don't think that you have that right to step on my property like that when I pay taxes and salaries and stuff like that, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time.
My name is Cyrus Ficini. I live in Oregon City in Clark Place Neighborhood. Ficini, Ficini. I'm going to hit on some of the same issues that he just spoke of. My first one is property rights. I just moved to Oregon City, purchased my home in August of 2015. One of the reasons was the availability, availability of the land, good land, fertile land, with plenty of sunshine, a decent amount of rain, and someplace where I could grow my state lawfully planted marijuana plants in my own personal backyard. I have four neighbors who can see the plants. None of them have ever had issues. If you were to come over to my house, if I were to walk you up my driveway, the first thing you would see was my garden. You'd see some tomatoes, you'd see the corn, which is now withered and fallen, and you'll see my pumpkins that I have put on the steps in the front, none of which have been stolen by any of these kids on the hill that I heard about. That's what our neighbors are calling them. The kids on the hill, the big fear that I should have my rights taken for the fear of future delinquency of my neighbors' children. I just think that's a ridiculous overstepping of the government onto my property. And then I'm also going to hit on what the police chief said at the last meeting that I watched. I watched them all on public access, assuming that we're all wealthy somehow, that it isn't a bother to have to put up lights and fans and have all of the expenses that go into growing marijuana indoors. I can't. I have a three-year-old son, I have an 850-square-foot home, no basement, no attic, there's no place inside to do this. I have a half acre of land, and I need to use it to have my marijuana that I personally use and is state law that I get to use it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor Holliday, could I ask Cyrus?
Sure.
Yes. Is there a smell to the cultivation of marijuana?
Well, I have one plant now. Three of mine didn't do so well, and I had to cut them down immediately. They really only flower for about a month, starting late summer until you harvest, which is about right now. And I guarantee you, there are a lot of yards around Oregon City right now that people are excited to get out and harvest their plants and use personally, and not have to drive to these dispensaries, and not have to go and disturb the parks or the transit centers or whatnot.
But is there?
There is a smell. There's definitely a smell, and it's more pungent than, say, you know, the neighbors' flowers, definitely. And that's why I've, you know, listened to my neighbors, and I've waited to hear if anybody had any issues, and so far it happens.
How long does that last, that smell?
Until you harvest.
Well, I mean, that's...
It's about to end. And then, you know, the smell really is more after the harvest period, when you're drying, when you have it indoors, when you have it in an enclosed space. That's where the smell becomes pungent, and you can actually smell exhaust fans from some of the, so I live really close to railroad, or, sorry, Clackamas River Drive, by the railroad, and there are some, I don't know, there are some businesses, something going on down there, where I can smell heavy marijuana scent coming from something. And I guarantee you, it's not four plants in somebody's yard.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So next, I have Cynthia Toll and Tom Guile.
Good evening. I just have three points.
Name and city for record.
Cynthia Toll, Oregon City. There was a timely article in the Willamette Week, and I don't know if it came out today or the other day. They were talking about the growers around Oregon bringing their plants outside and stop growing them, wanting to stop growing them in greenhouses because of sustainability. The lights and the equipment and the, the pull on the land from exercising all that electricity is just devastating as far as their sustainability practices are concerned. So in that sense, you have a private person that's, that is growing marijuana because they can't really afford to go to dispensaries, because maybe they're on a fixed income or they're, you know, and they, and they need it for, for management of pain, and so they decide to grow some plants in their yard. They can't really afford the equipment to bring the plants inside, and maybe they don't have the wherewithal to make them live, because according to this article, you know, it takes a lot of maintenance to grow your plants inside, rather than to just let them grow in the, in the air and on the outside. And it's cost prohibitive for these folks. And so this is, this puts a burden on people that want to, you know, do it for their own uses. And a dispensary pot is kind of expensive, because it's all been done for you, and so they package it up and they make it look pretty, and it costs a lot of money. All I can say is, when I first moved here, I asked the city if I could have chickens. And they said, sure, you can have chickens, but, they said, Oregon City has a traditional fly problem, and if you have chickens, and it causes a lot of flies, and we get neighbors complaining about smell and flies, then you're going to have to get rid of them. And I said, great, that's fine, and I never had a problem. So all I can say is, maybe that's how you should treat this, is something that if it gets, if it gets, you know, community complaints, then somebody's got to get rid of their plants, because they're not growing them in the right spot, or they're not taking care of them like they should. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Guile.
Tom Guile, Oregon City. So I'm here tonight to try and make some sense out of this discussion on the personal right to grow marijuana outdoors. Admittedly, I was the lone planning commissioner, continually arguing in favor of personal rights, until our planning commission finally saw some of the arguments I was doing, and you rely on a lot of what the planning commission sends to you of things. We worked this over left and right. We heard about the apples and coming over the fences and, and heard one commissioner said he actually sold it when he was younger, this and that, and we came down to a vote of four to one in favor of using the state law as it stands. Our commission followed it, and we agreed to do that. I'm not here to promote the use of marijuana, and that's what I kept telling them, I'm not here even suggesting that everyone grow it. All I'm asking is that we look at this fairly. In our commission meetings, we discuss the odor associated with the plant, we discuss safety and crime. However, what we did talk about was on a large lot of, let's say, 10,000 square feet, a few plants, four or less, permitted under state laws would not be noticeable. In the past, I experimented with growing the plant, and even had a few commissioners over to my house, and they never even knew I was growing it. And somebody was right, it does tend to have a pungent odor when you dry it inside. I wasn't very successful at it. On the way I look at it, I've seen code enforcement in our neighborhood now for barking dogs, for abandoned vehicles. They already have their hands full with, with all these kind of things. Our police department already has enough to keep them busy. There is no inherent danger in growing a few plants than the numerous calls they receive than as for stolen bikes or lawn mowers or other equipment, including home break-ins. There are no complaints about stolen plants or dangerous situations, no, excuse me, are there no complaints about stolen plants or dangerous situations? Certainly there are, but it is also hitting the news more recently, because the whole idea is now new, and it makes for good news. I was thinking about this, am I going to change even one of your minds tonight? Most likely not. We've spent years with the Reefer Madness movie and the government and the misinformation that has gone in for years, and so for some of you, it's kind of like, I think you mentioned image, is that the kind of image that we want to see coming in, even though you see it as soon as you cross the bridge over to what I thought was Gladstone, it's actually Clackamas County, I found out. So that scared everyone silly for years, and it was on the federal government, the federal government is now looking at lowering it. Marijuana weed is now proving to be medically helpful. In fact, I'm an investor on the New York Stock Exchange in one of the most successful stories of the use of THC from the plant for treating childhood epileptic seizures. The stock has gone from $34 to $138, I think I looked at it today. And the other night on our local news, they were discussing a local company who is also processing the plant for medicinal purposes. Even my own doctor, this summer after I had spine surgery, I complained about the Vicodin, Oxycodone, and all the side effects, he suggested I try a little bit of that, a little bit of that in the evenings to lessen the pain in my lower back.
You almost done?
Almost.
Okay.
So the point of all this, I'm sorry, oh, God, red light. The point of all this is that we allow people to grow hops outdoors for home brews, we don't regulate home brewing, and it smells too. People grow all kinds of plants outdoor. I'm allergic to Scotch blooming, it's all over the freeways. So all I want to say is, let's not continue the criminalization mentally of marijuana because of personal fears, or because you believe that some of your constituents still think it's criminal. We should be forward-thinking, marijuana's not going to go away, in fact, it brings in more tax dollars to our state than our country ever thought possible.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry if I went on too long.
You did.
Oh, I went over three minutes. I'm kidding. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next up, we have John Johnson and Julio Coato, is that right?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is John Johnson. I am a second-year resident of Oregon City, also a second-year amateur cannabis grower. I started four plants last year, the moment I was able to acquire the seeds. They went straight from seed into vegetation, into flower, into cure, and into jars in my basement. I started my first four plants this year in roughly March. They are at home right now, enduring this chill, and I was supposed to be cutting them right now. Instead, I'm sitting here talking to you. I would rather be at home cutting my plants. In the two years that I have been growing, no one has smelled them, no one has complained about them, and no one has even noticed them. Up until 2015, I probably wouldn't have been able to tell a cannabis plant from a tomato plant. This is an engaging habit, not habit, but hobby to me, or maybe it is a habit, but this is a new hobby, and I am finding it to be enlightening in a variety of different ways. I'm getting into the soil, I'm getting into the pH of the water, I am observing the weather. I would grow orchids, but I kill them every time. All of my bonsai trees are also dead. This isn't a problem, my neighbors have never noticed it, any of the teenagers in the area have not broken into my house and raided my basement, they have not chopped my plants down and taken them away from me. I have four plants sitting on my garage right now, and no one would know it if I hadn't told you. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, citizens. My name is Julio Coato. I live in Oregon City. I've been in the Northwest since 96, been living in permanent in Oregon City since 2009. I was in the Army for 10 years.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, it was my pleasure. I was medically discharged, and they, I got a bad back and bad knees. I was airborne infantry, and I love my job. They had me on Oxycodone, morphine, Percocet. I was almost brain-dead. I couldn't focus. And then we passed this law as a state, and I understand some people are offended by the smell, or by the risks that it might bring to some neighborhoods, but ever since I was introduced to the cannabis, I don't take no more pain pills. I do medicate accordingly. I enjoy life more, because I get engaged with my friends and my family. And now knowing that I can grow it in my backyard, and I have to spend money acquiring this medicine, now I hear that it could be taken away, because some people's feelings get hurt. If you'll take it away, you know, shame on you, because if I don't have this medicine, what I'll be doing is having to spend money for the pharmaceuticals. They don't care about me, they don't want me to get better, they just want me to keep buying their garbage, that is messing up my liver, or it was, because I haven't been on that stuff for now two years. But it, it, there's a lot more worse side effects than pharmaceuticals than the cannabis. And as long as I'm on my property and I'm growing in a place that it's not going to be seen by the public, yes, it might be smelly during some time of the year when it's getting ready to be plucked, but it's only temporary, and it's only, and it's going to smell whichever way the wind blows that day, it's not going to be a constant smell. And I just would appreciate if you'll take in consideration that taking this medicine or the ability for some of us to get it at an affordable way, forcing us to bring it indoors, like some of the peers said over here, I'm going to fix income. I don't have money to buy lights or anything else that has to go with it, and I don't have the knowledge, you know, the strength to do all the work, because it is heartbreaking work. Whoever does farm work knows that it's not easy. And I tried it one year, and that was it, I just tried it, because physically... And I tried it one year and that was it. I just tried it because physically I cannot do it. And financially, I cannot afford to be going to a, um, shoot, sorry, my apologies.
That's all right. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys. All right.
So our last two, Jane Grimm and Gio Haney.
Hello, Jane Grimm, Oregon City. Thank you for hearing us. I sit before you this evening, a very concerned citizen. As a homeowner, taxpayer of this city and state, I am appalled and outraged by the overreach of my city council members. Not only is this proposed ordinance a misuse of city funds and time, it is also not in line with our state rights as Oregonians. One other, a, a, a lot of people have made statements which I fully agree with. One thing that has not been addressed is if you have citizens of Oregon City grow indoors or let's say outdoors in a shed perhaps. Uh, I know and you know that not everyone is going to pull a permit for this. That even in the best of situations, it creates a pretty serious fire hazard for our city and the homes and our neighbors. So even if they're doing it perfect like they're supposed to, it still is more of an endanger to our community than a few plants in the backyard. Um, I could go on about how we have bigger projects to deal with. Like say, oh, maybe an empty building the size of a Kmart. Okay? I mean, let's get a roller rink in for kids. I don't know. I'm just, my point is I think we have bigger fish to fry. Um, and I think that you can see there are a lot of citizens here that whether they use or they don't use, would prefer not to have their rights as an Oregonian stepped on. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Haney.
Mr. Mayor, everybody else again. Uh, Mr. Shaw, I might have a brief answer to your question about the odor. Uh, I've been growing marijuana for quite a few years and in fact, uh, even here in Oregon City. And at one point in time, I had, uh, 48 plants uh, right across the street from the mayor of our city at that point in time. And plenty of, uh, law officials lived in my neighborhood. Never gotten a complaint from either one of them about the smell. It's very temporarily. Uh, so in my mind, it's not that crucial of an argument on your part.
What's, so what's temporary? Like a month or I guess I'm still trying to get that answer, so.
Yeah, you, you know, a month tops, I would say, at, at the peak of ripening. And, and just like another peer said, it's, it's the direction the wind blows. It's not consistent.
Okay.
Um, also another thing I'd like to address is you need to realize if you eliminate us to grow outdoors, you're gonna force people to grow indoors like they're talking about. Well, we are trying to accomplish a green economy. And when you grow any marijuana indoors, we put a, a very harsh footnote on our plant. And so it's, it's just the best thing to grow outdoors instead of indoors if we can. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else out there? Okay, so.
We got one.
What?
Got one over there.
Oh. Come on up. Mayman, City of Residence for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Matt Johnson and I, I live in Oregon City, uh, for just two months shy of a year. And, uh, I've, uh, taken advantage of, uh, being able to grow a plant in my backyard, just one. And very small backyards, very, uh, discreet, very private, but yet all three of my neighbors from each side have not complained. And I've, uh, I've done it responsibly. And so even one of those being a law enforcement officer, never have any issue, never smelled it. And I think that, uh, it's one of those things that I agree with what everyone else has said. I've had experiences in the past where people have grown indoors and it has caused problems with fire. Luckily, nothing bad happened, but, uh, there was some property damage. So I would, I'd like to see more folks growing outdoors for environmental reasons as well as safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, last chance. All right. So, uh, I would, uh, I would take a motion for continuance on the second reading um, until we get some further clarification from the city attorney.
Uh, move to continue. Uh, where are we here? Uh, second reading of ordinance number 16 dash 1010.
Can I ask a quick question?
Oh, sorry.
Yes. I don't know if I wanna put you guys on the spot like this. Is there interest in us spending time looking into this?
Maybe not.
You wanna have that discussion now or would you prefer to just continue it and us to come back with you?
Yeah. See where it goes.
Okay. So you wanna start, Commissioner Smith, since you said yes?
Um, well, I, I think, um, you know, a lot of our conversation at the, the previous meeting was, um, on this particular topic, um, was, um, a conversation with the police chief. Um, one of our citizens tonight asked the question about, um, why it was really, the conversation that we had about it being a nuisance. Um, and so maybe if you could just answer that question. I, I wanna say though that I appreciate the, um, testimony tonight. I think it may have changed my mind a bit. Um, and so, um, I just wanted to at least answer that question that was asked, um, at the previous topic. Why we, why that was referenced in that way.
So I, I can't give that without just a little bit of, kinda the whole picture a little bit. Um, I, I think that, that people think that police, that we inherently hate pot for some reason. I, i- if it's legal, I, I don't care what's, you know, we enforce laws. We don't, I don't, I don't really care if that it's marijuana. I would rather deal with anybody smoking marijuana than drinking any day of the week. I, I think most, most people in law enforcement would agree with me. That the position that, that we end up in, and, and I agree with a lot of the things that I heard and, and these are not decisions for me to make. What I do have to do though is, is consider a, a bunch of things. And, and I'll repeat a few of the things that, that got discussed at, at the prior meeting. Um, you know, kids, kids are one thing that I, I, I find few with some exceptions for certain medicinal things. But in general, I think it's pretty widely understood that the use of marijuana to, uh, in kids when their brains are developing is not good. Uh, and I, I think we all agree that kids using marijuana is not a good thing. So, so as a community, how, um, how, how do we, uh, well, after that last meeting, I, I got an email. Um, I, they had no idea about the discussion that had just taken place. But it was an email from, from somebody in the community and they were, uh, in their backyard and they could see marijuana plants in the, in their neighbor's backyard over the fence. And they really did not like it. They felt very strongly about it. And, uh, uh, it, it wasn't even from the public right of way. It was, I'm in my backyard and I can see my neighbor's marijuana and, and I don't like that. I don't, what is, you know, there, there could be these fears. Now, now you can say to that person, your fears are rational. Uh, you can say why, you, you know, your, your feelings hurt because it's illegal. You know, I, the, the thing about a community is, uh, for police, it's about livability and what, um, you know, what do we tell people later and what is, what is the community want? There's, um, yes, it was voted on, but I, I, I think that some of the discussions that happen at the local level is people voted about whether or not marijuana would be legal or not and, and, and it was written out. But there's a lot of things when you go to, uh, to put that into practice that have to get, uh, uh, figured out. I, I think that everybody has seen in Colorado and Washington before that that there was a lot of kinda landmines that people stepped on and I think that our law is in, in, in a better place. Um, and was certainly more, more well thought out. But on, on the livability thing, so whatever gets approved, uh, if, uh, you know, what, what do we say to the community in terms of neighbors or other people who don't like it? And this was not, you know, even statewide, it was not 99% to zero. It's, there's still a lot of people who have fears out there. Um, and, and what, whether they're real or not, they have as much of a right to feel safe in their yard as, as, as you or I do. Uh, regardless of, of what we all think about their opinion or what they think of yours and all that kinda stuff. So for me, after this, we do get phone calls. I get, uh, phone calls, emails, and we have for a long time about odor, uh, about the visibility of marijuana in the, in somebody's backyard. And I don't give my opinion on it. I tell them that the commission's working on this and trying to figure out what is gonna be best in the community. Um, you know, there are considerations with indoor grows and outdoor grows. We've had armed robberies, uh, some dangerous ones of indoor grows. Uh, we literally a week or two ago, right on the edge of town, had a large outdoor grow. Uh, some people came and ripped them off and stole their truck. Um, the, the, the biggest thing is, and I'm thinking of Oregon City together, um, as, you know, these, these advocates in the community and they're really geared toward kids and keeping, keeping things that they think are destructive out of the hands of kids. So, so as a police chief and somebody that they come to about issues like this and we work with them, uh, regardless of what I think about marijuana, I think they look to me to say, you know, they're, they're not here right now. I think if they knew this was going on, they would be. But, you know, what does the community do? Um, I, I think there are examples of people who have grows in their backyards and they've never seen a kid jump over the fence. But I guarantee it's gonna happen. If I were a kid and I was sitting up at the point, uh, I would, uh, probably jump your fence, you know, if, if I could get some free marijuana. Um, so, so.
Dating yourself there, Jim.
You saying I'm a kid?
And I'm saying you were that kid.
So it's, it's those considerations and it, and it's what, what do, what does the community do to, where do you draw the line? You know, do, do we, do you say we're, we're gonna really restrict around kids or, or be as careful as we can and then down the road, maybe, maybe we can always ease back? Or do we just kind of see what happens and then tighten things down later on if things start going bad? Um, but I, I, I think that if you take any substance that can be dangerous or, or a handgun or anything, and I, and it is going overboard to compare marijuana to a handgun, I understand. But, but anything that government does get involved in, uh, some control over and you think about it in a backyard versus behind a locked door. You know, I, I think that's a consideration related to kids is what, what does the community expectation about how we protect kids versus, you know, certainly putting, there, there is a financial hardship that a lot of people have, so. That's a jumbled mess of something that what I said last week.
Yeah, let me, let me ask a follow-up question here. Do, do the high school kids in Oregon City have any problem finding marijuana if they want it?
Well, I, I, no.
Okay.
But what, I, I, I think that that is, I, I think this is more, I think this is all bigger than that. You know, I, I, it, it's very easy for them to get it. So does that, so do we just throw in the towel? Or do we not make it any easier? You know, and that's.
All right. Thank you, sir. You bet. Thank you.
Um, so as a school teacher and a member of a long line of cops, family, uh, family members, um, I have, you know, various viewpoints that I've had my whole life as well. Um, I am weighing the conversation that we had at the last meeting, um, which was just, um, discussed a little bit by our chief tonight. And everything else that this commission has done really in the past. Um, one issue that comes to mind, not necessarily, um, completely relatable other than the property, um, argument, which is we have in the past had conversations about heritage trees and, and this commission and past commissions have been very reluctant to, um, make decisions on public, on people's property. Um, and, um, so we've had those conversations at this level. Um, in addition, we've had conversations about, um, retroactively changing things. Um, and that hasn't worked out so well. Um, and, and so we definitely have citizens that are currently growing in their backyard. And so this would be another, um, situation where we're saying, go back to nothing, which in some, which we've talked about, the issues with membrane structures and other things in the city as well. So, um, I, I'm hearing that debate. I'm hearing the testimony tonight, which I really absolutely appreciate. Um, it, it impacted me quite a bit. Um, so I, I do wanna kind of find out, um, what the rest of the commission is thinking, um, whether or not we need to go look into the legal question that was, was asked. And I don't know that we really told the public what that was, but.
No, let me, let me do that now if you're done.
That, we're referring to an email that we got earlier, was it today?
Uh, yeah, actually, uh, so a couple of days ago, I, in fact, I was reading the Land Week article that was, uh, that was mentioned and, um, the attorney who actually drafted the original version of Measure 91, um, has a law firm called Emerge, Emerge Law Group. So I called down there because I wanted to know whether we had the legal standing to be able to do this. And I figured, you know, what better way than to get it from the horse's mouth? So they sent me back and I'm just gonna read, uh, just a, a, a piece of the, and I wanna be clear, they were not giving me legal advice. I was just asking, you know, a question about, you know, and they, and they sent me the information back. So they say, uh, in Section 33 of House Bill 4014, it provides, "A city or county may not adopt an ordinance by referral or otherwise that prohibits or otherwise limits the privileges described in ORS 475B dot 245." And in, in part of that, it says, "Gives laundry list of provisions and affirmatively states that they do not apply to homegrown personal plants." So I'm not sure, cause I'm not a lawyer. We have, we have lawyers to do that sort of thing. But that seems fairly clear to me that at least the intent of the legislature was that cities and counties weren't gonna get the chance to go in and do more restrictive things. Um, now they gave us pretty wide latitude in the,
Buffers.
In the commercial side. But in the, in the home growing side, it looks to me like they were pretty clear. At least their intent was clear that they were getting, in fact, this, uh, the, the lawyers around this group, uh, they call them the Four Freedom Plants. So, uh, I'm not sure where that came from. But I think the point is, is that, um, at, at least from, from this particular, uh, uh, group of attorneys. Um, and, and the only thing they sent me was basically just the stuff out of the law. So there was no opinion here. This is just what the law says. So I wanted to make sure that the audience and the TV audience as well heard, you know, why we are kind of having this hiccup here. Um, is Commissioner Shaw, you have something?
Well, my, my previous conversation was, uh, along the lines of Chief Ban too. I, you know, I spent a lot of time doing activities and project, projects and belong to an organization that's really devoted to the kids in this community. And, um, and actually have, uh, participated in that Oregon City Together program too. So I'm trying to weigh this out, um, because there are property rights involved in personal property. And, uh, so I'm kind of interested to see what my fellow commissioners might have to say.
Commissioner Hyde.
That's why I get the big bucks here, you know?
I, I'd be really curious to see what our city attorney has to say about this email, uh, myself. Um, I would like to know where all of the other folks are that, um, that want, want us to ban it in the, the neighborhoods. Where are, where are they? Because all we heard from tonight was from a, a large group of people that want to, to have it be able to grow in their backyard. Um, and the other thing is if, if this is so, I'm afraid of, um, the risk that, um, the city would be under if it's true, so. I need to hear a little bit more from you on that.
Commissioner Mengeberg, you got anything?
I think a number of the folks did express the opposing viewpoint at a previous meeting. And there was some heartfelt testimony along those lines. So, you know, clearly, we're hearing the majority viewpoint in one direction this time. But that doesn't mean we haven't gotten a lot of testimony, or written testimony through the process, on the other side as well. So, it's not a clear-cut, slam dunk, simple decision.
Okay.
And I'm for the kids.
Well, we're all for the kids. You know, I mean...
Protecting kids from danger.
Right. And certainly, we all are. And, you know, we wouldn't be sitting up here getting, you know, the massive salaries that we get if we were.
So, it sounds like maybe...
Hang on, I'm not done yet.
Okay.
And I have the greatest amount of respect for our chief of police. And Jim and I get along great, and I think he has the best interests of our entire city, certainly as his top priority. But I grew up in the 70s. And we're talking about in the 70s, so we're talking about 40 years ago. And, you know, marijuana was plentiful and easily obtainable by any high school kid, anywhere in the country. And it is, you know, literally no different now. So, I don't think the opportunity for someone to grow in their backyard really presents a risk, or any greater risk to children as a whole than, you know, than is out there now. I mean, Commissioner Smith, you certainly know that, you know, any kid at the high school that wants to get pock can find it somewhere, right? So, I guess I tend to go with, the voters have already spoken once. And even if we, even if the voters in Oregon City pass the commercial ban, that still is not going to affect the personal grow. So, it's here to stay in some form or another. I think that, you know, the reason we have votes are to express the will of the majority as a whole. And that vote has already taken place. So, I am for staying with state law, not looking at this issue any farther, but I will defer to my fellow commissioners.
My willingness to ask the commission to have this discussion, instead of just continuing to the next meeting, was I thought there might be consensus. It doesn't necessarily sound like that, so maybe we had this conversation a wee bit early. But I would... I definitely lean towards the conversation that we've had tonight. I think having the answer to this may be a little bit more definitive, would solidify that even more so. So, if we need to have another conversation at the next meeting to really weigh this issue, maybe that's what we need to do.
I guess the only thing in response to that I would have to say is that we spent a lot of time this year working on legal issues, and being, you know, a test case for another issue. I'm not sure that this is a hill I'm willing to die on, as far as, you know, putting our city at risk for, you know, making a test case. And this attorney that I was talking to, what was her name?
Corinne Selko.
Corinne Selko said that this is the first time any other city has mentioned doing this. So, no other city doing their time, place, and manner regulations has brought, at least according to her and her information, has brought up trying to do an outdoor grow ban. So, you know, if we do this, you can almost guarantee that somebody is going to sue us over. Commissioner Kibysman?
No, I agree.
Mr. Kibysman, there you go.
I could only be so lucky. I did want to offer an idea, you know...
It pays worse.
It is. You know, as I look, I still think it's ambiguous, but the, you know, the test case is a concern. But one thing that I would point out is that the, you know, the Four Freedom Plants, as they call it, is, you know, that protects the right to have up to four plants in the backyard. One alternative may be to limit, you know, plants to no more than four. That would avoid this issue, provide, you know, sort of a middle ground of making sure that people can, in fact, grow outdoors and avoid this issue.
Were you saying that if there's more than one adult in the house, each adult is allowed to have up to four plants?
That...
Or four plants per household.
One or more persons 21 years of age, if the total amount of homegrown marijuana at the household does not exceed four plants, so it'd be four plants per household.
So, the four-plant limit's already there?
Right. Well, what this says, it's not a four-plant limit. It says, "No city or county can do anything to prevent," you know, assuming Ms. Selko is correct, "can limit anything other than four plants." Could somebody right now grow more than four plants? Or could somebody, if in fact, the city voters adopt the time, place, and manner, and allow this to go forward, could somebody grow more than four plants?
Doesn't that mean the law basically says that, they're limited to four plants?
Well, except that if you have a marijuana growers card with card stacking, you can get more than four plants, and you'd be allowed to grow...
Well, but that's under a medical marijuana. And more importantly, I've got one of those guys, you know, right around the corner from me, and he's been doing it for five years.
So, I think there's, you know...
Legally.
I understand that's legally, that you can do that, but that doesn't prevent the city from taking other actions that... It sounds like it's something that the commission wants more information about how to address it.
Well, do you want to come back with some more lawyer information?
I want to sit on it until next meeting, continue this, and get a ruling on this stuff. But I, you know, my concern isn't the high school kids. My concern is, because I know we're all great parents in this room, but there's...
I was a crappy parent.
I'm trying to be nice here. So, but there's always that, you know, we have to kind of protect, you know, those kids that don't have that opportunity. And these are children. I'm not talking about high school, because by that time, you know, it's off the table. So, my concern is the children, and the possibilities of them getting this. Now, is there any historical data collected on that, about children getting a hold of marijuana? Whether it's in Washington, Colorado, or here, since people have been growing it? I don't know that, you know. But I just know that concern, you know, of children getting a hold of it.
Okay. So, if we're going to continue aside here, a motion for continuance of this to the next regular meeting?
Move to continue?
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
That'd be the October 18th meeting.
How full is that? Katie?
It's, there's a room.
Okay. All right.
Yes, I assume so, yeah.
So, moved to second, and no further discussion. Call roll, please.
Commissioner Hyde?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. Okay, we're going to take about seven minutes break, come back at quarter to nine, and have the discussion on Measure 97. So, do I have your attention yet? Okay. So, I felt it was important that the city commission, as a whole, at least here, from and have a discussion of Measure 97. And so, I invited both proponent and opponents from the major campaigns to attend. I'm not sure who is here tonight, for and against. So, if those two players would come up to the podium. You are from...
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead. Did we not have someone from the opposing side? Okay. Well, that confuses me. Well, no, there was supposed to be somebody here from the... Okay. Well, let's hear from, sir, if you'd give us your name and where you're from, and give us your five-minute spiel on why you think Measure 97 is a good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city commissioners. My name is Dale Hendrick, I am from Salem. And I'm here to talk about Measure 97, because Oregon has a serious issue. We are dead last in the country in corporate taxes collected per year. And at the same time, the largest corporations that experience this low tax rate are making more money than they ever have. At the same time, Oregon working families are making $2,000, yet less, per year than they did eight years ago. All of this is happening while we have been steadily increasing our income taxes to make up for a lack of investment in our critical services that everybody in the state of Oregon utilizes. And basically, we've been suffering in those major areas. Eighty percent of our budget goes towards K through 12 schools, healthcare, and senior services. Now, as we've been balancing our budget on the backs of working families, they fluctuate with the economy, and we've been through a recession, as I'm sure everybody is familiar with that. Now, during this recession, the folks that have done the best, not as well as they could have, obviously, but done the best, are the largest corporations in our country. And here in Oregon, it's no different. We're trying to invite business here. However, now, as opposed to 15 years ago, the revenue that our state brings in was made up of, 15 years ago, 17% of that was from corporate taxes. Now, it's less than 7%. Measure 97 is the corporate minimum tax increase, only for C corporations that make over $25 million in Oregon sales. And that affects less than one-quarter of 1% of all Oregon businesses. And then it directly invests that money into K through 12 schools, pre-K, healthcare, and senior services. These are the things that we all utilize, especially businesses, by doing business in our state. And that's the basics on the measure. You're going to hear a lot of things, and, you know, I'm sure you've already seen the TV ads starting to roll out. It's really kind of overwhelming. But, you know, the reason I'm here to talk is because, you know, the people of Oregon have a decision. You know, do we want to invest in the things that make our economy stronger through recession? And make Oregon a better place for everybody? Or are we going to continue to have the lowest corporate tax rate in the entire country, which has only gotten us the fourth-lowest high school graduation rate, healthcare costs increasing by 30% in the last 10 years, and 2/3rds of our seniors retiring into poverty? Basically, you're going to hear a lot of things about Measure 97 that are misrepresented. That it's going to cause the state of Oregon all kinds of issues. That, you know, we're not going to be able to handle it somehow. However, it's quite a simple measure. It affects two lines of tax code, that's it. It simplifies and balances the tax code, so that we can better invest in the services that we so desperately utilize every single year. And, you know, I am connected to this measure, because I'm a native Oregonian. I grew up in Salem, I went to public schools my entire life. I came from a single-parent household, excuse me. And my mom worked three and four jobs at times to make sure that I could go to school, that I was interested in reading. And eventually, I realized music was a big thing in my life, because music teachers inspired me to go to school and to attend school. And I decided, when I graduated high school, I want to be a music teacher. I want to inspire kids the way my teachers did. And I started to find out, in between high school and starting college at Oregon State, our schools are not in the state that I would like them to be. And I saw from older friends who went on to become teachers, mentors, you know, we were cutting classes. We don't have as many college prep, hands-on career tech kind of courses that make better working people after they graduate from high school. We've been slashing those things and laying off teachers. I experienced it personally, by seeing class sizes balloon to, in some cases, 45 kids, where there's not enough desks for them to sit at. This is a very serious issue, as I'm sure Commissioner Smith knows, as a teacher. You know, we need to make sure that we are able to provide for our kids the education that they need in order to compete. And, you know, I was also one of those kids that, since my mom was working three and four jobs, and she didn't graduate from college, she was, we didn't have healthcare. So, I was one of the kids that had to go to the ER for an ear infection, because we didn't have a regular doctor. And I was a beneficiary of the Affordable Care Act. But at the same time, there are still over 20,000 kids without healthcare. You know, and I saw both of my grandmas go through our senior services in the state. And I saw two pictures. One of them was able to stay at home, receive care there, and she was in remission for five years. They told her she only had one year to live. She made it for five years. At the same time, my other grandma was in and out of facilities, because she was unable to receive care at her home. And unfortunately, she passed away a lot younger than we would have liked her to. So, these things have been personally experiencing on me. And I'm just here to beg the city council to, you know, remain neutral in this position, and allow the Oregon, the people of Oregon City, to make their own decision, because this is very critical for our services that we all utilize.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks.
So, unfortunately, apparently, the opponent of the measure was unable to be here tonight. But we have three commenters, so Amber Holvec and Sue Stein.
Good evening again, Amber Holvec, representing the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce. And I'll just reiterate that the Oregon City Chamber Board of Directors, with research and deliberation from our own Government Economic Affairs Committee, after hearing a debate from both the pro and con camps back in the early days of IP28, voted earlier this year to oppose this measure. I've been in contact with numerous business leaders, some of which I have included in a couple little statements or quotes. And they couldn't be here tonight, but I did want to pass their thoughts on. One is from Jerry Turner, you might know him, founder of Pioneer Pump in Canby, founder of Ancestry Brewing in Tuolleton, former resident of Oregon City, and part owner in the Wild Hare Saloon here in Oregon. His quote, "Measure 97 is a way to get a sales tax in without calling it a sales tax. It's important that we reiterate the truth, that Oregon's corporate taxes are not the lowest in the US, but rather middle of the pack." And I'll have some more information on that a little bit later. Don Lewis, who represents General Distributors as a sales manager, states that "Common sense tells us that this tax will be passed through to the consumer." And I'll get into that, actually, both Sue and I will have some comments on that. One of the key reasons that I believe I'd like to share with you this evening, that opposition of Measure 97 is the right direction, is that it would damage Oregon's economy and cause the loss of thousands of local jobs. And let me tell you a little bit more about that. "The 2.5% tax on companies' total sales indicates no deductions for expenses, employee salaries, and benefits, or any other operating costs. It would be the highest tax on business sales in the country." Okay, how many have ever done retail? Only one of you? Okay, well, that's all right. That's all right. Not judging, not judging. But the fact is, is that raw products start here, and there's lots of different steps in that process to get to the end game, which is the end consumer. Okay, so, there's a lot of expenses that go into that little product. Let's see, "An analysis by bipartisan economists at Eco Northwest determined that it would be the equivalent of a 40% corporate income tax over three times higher than the highest state corporate tax rate in the US. Iowa's top at 12%. State of Oregon's own study concluded that this tax would cause the loss of 38,000 private sector jobs in our state." It's the state of Oregon's own study. It would also make Oregon one of the worst states in which to expand a business or locate a new business. And I thought that we were working to make business stronger in Oregon City. And then, last but not least, because I know I'm on the yellow, in reference to Oregon being at the bottom of that chain of corporate taxes across the... across the nation, well, let's look at this. There's lots of different ways to actually quantify Oregon's relative rank, comparing Oregon's top marginal tax rate, 7.6% is one way. It's the 18th highest nationally. Another way is to consider how much money Oregon's corporate income tax raises in revenue on a per capita basis. In fiscal year 2014, Oregon's corporate income tax collected $125 per capita, or 20, 26 highest, and then in the other, the last one, Oregon ranked 37th nationally in the State Business Tax Climate Index. Not one of those were 50th in the nation, and I'm going to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Stein?
Thank you. Hi. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name's Sue Stein. I'm a representative from Stein Oil. We've been in business over 50 years, and we are a fuel retailer. The problem that I see with this is, again, once again, the climate of the economy in Oregon is hard to continue as a medium-sized business. We are not a C corp. I feel that we will be extremely affected. The potential of loss of jobs is definitely, we employ 100 entry-level jobs. We're continually looking at that. But, the biggest issue is, this is government, and the government is, again, not calling the law, calling the proposed measure what it is. It's a sales tax. Let's have a straight sales tax. Let's call it that. Let's put it to roads. Let's put it to education. And instead of having it go into the general fund, and again, in four or five years, there'll be a deficit. It will be funding PERS, and it will not get to the needs of, of the state. We need to do something about this education system. I'm a representative with the community college. We're having a lot of troubles finding funding for it. I fight all the time for it. You take businesses out. There are part of, private donors, they give money to the community, and they put it back, and there are a lot of great people in this community, but if you keep hacking away at these kinds of things that are not true tax-based, call it what it is, make it a sales tax, just like you did with the minimum wage. Minimum wage went in, you're going to deteriorate that to, to the people that you tried to help. All the goods are going to go up, fuel for sure, all the food, the utilities, everything. And so, from a realistic standpoint, you give something, you take it away, and you take it away at the people that are really needed, and they're already fighting. I know the people. I employ a lot of them, and, again, with Affordable Care Act and everything, we can barely continue to provide that. We provide retirement fund. We're already looking at having to potentially get rid of these things. If it's a gross sales receipt tax, it is not fair to the businesses because it is not really, it's going against their whole year, not again, their profit, not the, their, what it should be. And so, for that reason, I think you need to really look hard and fast at how the dollars get down, and this state and the cities and the communities need to start being fiscally responsible. That's why we continue to go back out and ask for money, and eventually, there won't be any money. We'll follow California. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, next up, Commissioner Betty Mumm and Tom Guile.
Come on, Tom. Former.
Once you got it, you always got it.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I appreciate you guys hearing me out today. I was at the meeting, and I did hear both sides of the argument, both pros and cons for this. Now, the biggest, my biggest concern, and I did ask at that meeting, is how are you going to guarantee that this money is going to go to schools? How are you going to guarantee it's going to go to seniors or healthcare? Their answer was, we're going to ask that they respect the wishes of the voters. Well, when you're looking at PERS at $20 billion for our state to come up with, this money is going to go in the general fund, and it's not going to go to schools. It's not going to go to healthcare. It's not going to go to seniors. It's going to go to PERS, and that's the bottom line. So, I own a business myself, and it's really hard to own a business and try and make any money at owning a business. I'm sure Tom can, can identify with that. So, and this is going to just get passed right on to all of us. All of the citizens in Oregon City are going to endure higher, higher gas, higher groceries. It's just not, and everybody knows that those healthcare and seniors and kids need to have funding. The school system is broken. It has been broken for many, many years, but this is not the answer. This is not the answer. So, I would encourage you to encourage everybody around you to vote no.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Is that good?
That is.
Mr. Guile.
I have a minute.
What else would you like to say?
Oh.
No, too late. It's already said.
Well, I didn't think this was actually going to be a debate tonight, but I've had so many people, knowing that I'm involved with this politics and the community and otherwise, ask me this question about 97, and I've had no idea until tonight, when Amber has very eloquently explained it, so that I understand it a little bit better. I do know, after working a decade at US Bank or Fred Meyer Corporation and all that, but anytime you put taxes on a corporation, it gets passed down to the customer. So, I didn't know how this was going to work, and I just wish that there was more citizens. What we're seeing on TV is very confusing to all of us, and of course, and I'm not sure if the gentleman here tonight was a paid lobbyist or not, but we're getting so much confusing information, and people are paying, being paid to tell us this stuff, so I'm glad we heard this, but I wish everybody in Oregon City would tune into this or get to one of the debates or the informational ones that Amber's putting on, just so people understand this, because I don't think anybody really comprehends what this means. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betty.
So, last chance. Anybody else want to speak on this?
Oh.
Are you the representative from? Oh, okay. I was hoping. Go ahead and sit down. Give us your name.
My name is Debbie DeRusha. I live in Oregon City. Thank you for hearing me. I wasn't planning on speaking when I walked in the door, but I heard the gentleman speak earlier. He supports Measure 97, and I don't know much about it, other than it's a tax on larger corporations on their gross sales, and common sense tells me that doesn't make sense. So, it also tells me that people in Salem, whoever is looking for money, is just perusing through a pile of people who they know make money and picked them, because they've tried everything else. The gentleman that spoke earlier, to me, the way he explained it seemed as though he was blaming our graduation rate, our increased healthcare, and the lack of senior care on our inability to collect taxes from these people. And I am here to tell you, our ability to collect taxes has nothing to do with any of the deficits in those categories. I care for seniors. That's my business, and I could list a plethora of things that are wrong with our system as it relates to caring for seniors, and it doesn't have anything to do with how much money we have and how much money we don't have. And my other question, which was answered, is if they collect this money, where does it go? Does it go to the general fund, or does it go to someplace special? I heard it goes to the general fund. What does that tell you? It just makes no sense at all. It is not well-planned out. It's not going to go to correct the things that I agree are wrong here in Oregon or in the country. It's not going to fix it, and I, I can't even see why anybody would think that it was a common sense thing to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Joyce Gifford, and I live here in Oregon City, and I am in the schools every day. I'm a substitute teacher, and this, just today, I had a discussion in a lunchroom with a teacher who had a Yes on 97 button on.
I hope you were on your lunch break.
It was lunchroom and lunch break, yes. At lunch break, yes, with this Yes on 97 button on. And we had a nice civil discussion about it, and, you know, he was, some back and forth, and I said, you know, the, the one thing that I agree with, of course, is that we need to fix the funding of the schools, but I don't think Measure 97 is the way to do it, and the problem with it is, it's taxing those gross sales. If it taxed the net earnings of those businesses after they had paid their employees and, and all the other things that they have to pay for, and you take a tax on the net profits, but taxing their gross profits is something they're going to have to pass on to everybody, and it's just going to be a lot harder for them. So, and he had to agree. He said, probably, it should have been the net and not the gross. So, even those in support of Measure 97 understand that there are flaws in that measure. Thank you.
So, I just want to correct something that Ms. Gifford said, and that is, it's not gross profits, it's gross receipts. So, it's, it's the total amount of money a company takes in before deducting any expenses.
Instead of their net profits.
Instead of, yeah, instead of profits. So, that's a, a big deal. Anybody else? Last chance? We do have a process for this, you know.
Yeah, he's following it. What's he not doing?
I'll get the hang of it.
It'll be okay, Phil. You'll get the hang of it.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is William Gifford. I live in Oregon City. There are two basic flaws with this measure in my, in my thinking. One was rather eloquently described in the fact that it's taking from the gross receipts rather than from profits. But secondly, and this, I think, is the most disingenuous part of that whole measure, is that because of state constitution, they can't dedicate where that money is going. And all the rhetoric about, oh, it's going to fund our schools. It's going to take care of our elderly, that's going to go in one big bucket called the general fund. You all know this. And the distributors of that general fund, namely our legislature, are going to use that money to fill the biggest gaps that they can find. The biggest gap they've got is PERS. It's hard to imagine how any, any additional income coming to the state, especially in the quantities that are, that are expected from this measure if it passes, assuming the business is stated to pay the taxes, that that's, that's going to go to support PERS. I, I can't, if I was a legislator and somebody handed me a big bucket of money and I had a big outstanding debt, I'd probably pay the big outstanding debt first. And if anything trickled down to the schools and the elderly, gee, that would be a nice bonus, but I think it's disingenuous for the proponents of the measure to say that this is going to help our school system.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, now, last chance. Sure. Huh? Would you consider rebuttal by the person?
Fair enough. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Three minutes.
Just interesting.
Hustle.
So, it sounds like, okay, a few things. It's written directly into the measure that the money goes, in addition to funding already in place, towards pre-K, K through 12, healthcare and senior services. I'm sorry, folks can interrupt me, but anyways, it's written specifically into the measure that Oregonians will be voting on. Additionally, we have over 400 small businesses, you know, numerous, you know, community organizations who advocate on behalf of Oregonians to make sure that we, you know, are able to do the things that we need to make better lives, and they would not have gotten behind this measure if they didn't think that this was going to be going to the right spot. Additionally, the large non-state corporations that this affects, 85% of the money that this brings in comes from those making over $100 million in Oregon sales. 82% of them are located outside of the state of Oregon. That's where the headquarters are, and they just do business here. Now, what happens is that money is piped out of our state, out of our economy, and out of our ability to reinvest it into those things that we need in order to make a better economy. So, that was the, it's not going to go in the right spot. You know, these large corporations, they have national pricing schemes. Comcast, they charge you as much as they can. I can call Comcast right now, tell them I have a problem with my service. They'll go from 80 bucks a month to 50 bucks a month for three months, and then I'm back to the 80 again later. You know, that, that's how they set their prices, and this is not going to be going down to small businesses because it only affects those that make over $25 million in Oregon sales. Additionally, it only applies to the money after the first 25 million. And then, as far as, you know, folks facing higher prices or businesses leaving the state, why would these corporations that care so much about Oregonians, I don't remember the last time that Comcast was in the state capital fighting for Oregon children, you know, we're on this side of children as well. We want our children to be safe and have the best education possible, and these folks would not have gotten behind it if they didn't know that it was going to the right, to the right place, coming from the folks that are paying the least, and then, in addition to that, why would they be spending? Now, it was reported, actually, this morning, the corporate opposition campaign to this measure now has over $17 million in donations. 80% of the money comes from out-of-state. I don't want out-of-state corporations to be running Oregon elections, and this is already going to be the most expensive Oregon election in history, and it's just with their money, not counting the Yeses money. So, I mean, really, for me, it's a question of who do I trust? Do I trust the folks that I've seen going to the Oregon Capitol every single year, year in, year out, for children and for, you know, healthcare and for seniors and all this other kind of stuff, or do I trust large non-state corporations receiving already the lowest corporate tax rate in the entire country? The statistic where we're middle of the pack, that comes from the Tax Foundation. Tax Foundation is created by the Koch Brothers, numerous multinational corporations.
Okay, we're, we're done at that point. I have, hey, so, I, I have a couple of quick questions for you. So, you're talking about all the money in opposition. Where's the money in support coming from?
From Oregonians who, you know, take money out of the money that they earn and put it towards folks who are fighting for the things that, you know, we need in our state.
Do you want to honestly answer the question now?
Yeah, yeah, from Oregonians.
From unions, specifically the SEIU, ASME, and the teachers' unions. Is that correct or not?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think, you know, it's important to also note that these are Oregonians who work living-wage jobs, you know, that they are taking money out of their paycheck to ensure that all of us have better access to the services that we utilize, and, you know, that's, again, who do you trust? The people who are here in Oregon?
So, my last, my last question is, you say it's written into the measure, but in reality, there is no mechanism that requires the legislature to spend this money on those subject matters. Is that correct?
The measure is statutory, yes, and the legislature has the authority to alter statutory law. That's what they're there for, right? I mean, y'all are elected officials. You understand how laws are made and changed in the necessity that the community needs them to be made and changed. Now, if 6,000 people came out to gather signatures, and we are knocking on over 300,000 doors across the state of Oregon with real Oregonians going door to door.
But there is no, there is no mechanism inside this measure that requires the legislature to spend the money on, on healthcare, on senior services, or education. Is that true or not?
Section 3 of the measure clearly states, in addition to funds in place, the money must go to pre-K, K through 12 schools, healthcare and senior services. That is the ballot title that the people of Oregon will be voting on. It's that simple.
Yet, yet, the initiative process does not, I mean, it's just a fact that the legislature, this money's going to the general fund, and the legislature can spend it however they want. That, that, we, as, as an initiative process, we can't tell the legislature, we're going to give you $100,000 and you have to spend it at Tom's store. It can't be done. Anybody else? Questions?
I'm fine. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, do you, you guys wish to have a discussion about this, or do you want to punt?
Well, I think we can discuss it, Mayor Holliday, but I don't know if, if we need an opinion on it for anybody, but I think discussion's fine. I don't, like I said, I don't know whether we need to register an opinion from the total or...
I purposely did not bring a resolution either way.
And that's fine. You know, that's so, you know, my, and, you know, Mayor Holliday and I have gone out to ribbon cuttings, and we both are on the... to ribbon cuttings, and we both are on the same page there. We're a business-friendly city here, and we continue to do that. So we are pro-business. I'm pro-business, but I'm pro-schools, you know? So trying to weigh this out, but it scares me that there's nothing there in that measure that says this is, you know, is for sure going to schools. Because if that said that, and there's no ins or outs about it, there's no wiggle room, then that would, I would have a little more, a different, maybe different position. But I'm in manufacturing, as Mr. O'Donnell is here, and we just lost, Esko Corporation left town. Now, I'm not saying it's because of any of this and stuff, but there's nothing coming in to replace that. And manufacturing is, to me, is just, you know, that's my way of life and stuff. So I cannot afford to really have any taxes being put on the business side of this because it is in such kind of jeopardy right now, the business side. So, but I'm pro-schools, and I just wish there was somebody down there in Salem that had the initiative to come up with something to battle PERS or do something different down there. But we're going to continue on until, you know, there's nothing left.
Okay. Commissioner Magelberg?
This is a tough one for me. My professional colleagues in the economic development world are strongly against Measure 97. They think it would be a deterrent for business recruitment and that some businesses might consider it when they make business expansion decisions or business relocation decisions. On the other hand, I'm a citizen of the state and I care very much about it. And our tax system has been broken for a long time. Our revenues have been falling behind, not because of misspending or waste or any of that stuff. The way the system is set up, we're constantly falling behind, and we have been for 25 years with Measure 547 and 50. We're put in place. The legislature has not been able to come up with a solution. The union has brought this forward as a desperate attempt to try and fix a dire situation. If this doesn't pass, PERS does loom, which means that many of the programs we really value are going to be gutted. Today in the paper, they were talking about the Oregon Health Program and how federal subsidies are going to be cut, which means that our most disadvantaged seniors are going to be hurt badly financially without having the healthcare services that they need. Our school teachers are struggling with class sizes of 45 students, 35 students. How can our businesses be successful if we don't have a well-educated workforce? We haven't been able to teach career and technical education in a lot of our high schools. Oregon City's a fortunate exception with case, but many aren't. And so we just keep falling behind, and I don't want Oregon to continue to be last or at the very bottom like we have been for a really long time. And we have to look at the big picture, and we need to, you know, figure out how to fund our state. I don't think another solution is going to be coming forward from our legislature anytime soon. This is a good shot, and it's not perfect. Nobody's saying it's perfect, but I'm going to support it.
Commissioner Smith?
I've been teaching 16 years. This is my 16th year. I've never had classes the size they are today. I have 40 students in every class. It is overwhelming. It is extremely difficult. And so definitely, we know that we have these issues. And I think Renata spoke to this very well. Do I think Measure 97's going to fix it? No. I don't. I don't think, I don't think there's, well, I think there's a lot of loopholes. I think there's a lot of things that could have been written a lot better. I think there, so I'm definitely concerned about it. I think everyone's concerned about it either way. And it's another one of these decisions that we will not know what the entitled effect is going to be until citizens vote. I will say, though, that I have a hard, I had no problem having this conversation tonight as a commission. I think if a body such of this, such as the commission or any government body takes a specific stand one way or another, that it should be, especially on a political issue like this, it should be unanimous. I think if this whole commission agreed all in one direction, I would support that, either direction it would go. But if that's not the case, I think it's, you know, an important decision that the voters have been given and need to make. And we will all do that as individual citizens. Hopefully, we figure it out before Election Day. But I'm not hearing a complete, you know, overwhelming opinion on this commission tonight one way or the other. So if I heard that, I might be, you know, definitely leaning to it. I have huge concerns. I want to see, I want to see my purse funded. I also don't want to have 40 kids in the classroom. I also, you know, have huge concerns of all the other issues that this state desperately needs to fix. But time and time again, we've voted against sales taxes and, you know, this is one way to try to resolve a situation that the state hasn't been able to resolve. And I don't know if it's, I don't think it's a solution that necessarily will work.
Okay. Commissioner Ayd?
I can't add a whole lot more to all that's been said. I support businesses and I support education, and so I'm kind of neutral at this point. I just feel like I personally need to study it more before I can come to some kind of a resolution on it.
Okay. So as usual, I'll go last. And everybody remembers the old saying, hold on to your wallets when the legislature's in session. So one of the things that Commissioner Magelberg said is that revenue has been flat or declining. And the fact is, is that from 2005 to the 2016, 2017 biennium, the General Fund budget's gone up by close to 50% in that timeframe.
I'm talking about property taxes.
Okay, top property taxes. But the state's getting more money. They're just not spending it well. One of the things that I have a real concern about, and the reason I wanted to have this discussion at the City Commission, is that I have heard from businesses that, you know, they could consider going somewhere else. We talk about all these, you know, Comcast and all these, you know, boogeymen out there from, you know, national corporations. Well, look at Benchmade knives. You know, Benchmade is one of, probably one of the top five producers of those kinds of tools in the country. They're located right here in Oregon City. We're working with them on a new expansion plan, hopefully over the next couple of years. They want to stay here, but this could be a real incentive for Benchmade to go someplace else. Miles Fiber Glass and Composites, another company that easily reaches over that $25 million a year in gross revenue. These are real jobs for Oregon City people, and this has a real possibility of moving those jobs not only out of Oregon City but out of state. This is just, it's a bad idea on so many levels. One of the key things, and we didn't really hit on it, but where they talk about, you know, we're going to help seniors, and we're going to help healthcare, and we're going to help kids, yet when this gets passed down, it's going to hit those exact people the hardest. There is no exemption for medical, not only medical, you know, devices and pharmaceuticals, but the healthcare in general. There is no exemption for food. So you have companies like Fred Meyer Kroger, who will end up paying this, but somebody like New Seasons, who isn't a C corp, won't. And so now you start putting in this dynamic of you're pitting one kind of business, you're giving one business an advantage and one business a disadvantage just because of the way the measure's set up. I agree. I think that a retail sales tax, you know, in conjunction with lowering both the property tax and the income tax, would be, you know, the three-legged stool that we've all talked about. But until we can gain some trust in our legislature, I don't see that occurring. But this thing, this monster in the room, is a horrible idea, and I am definitely in opposition to it. I don't trust the legislature as far as I could throw them, that they're going to spend this money wisely. All we have to do is look at the decisions that have been made in the last couple of years, you know, $300 million on a healthcare website that never ended up working, close to the same amount for a bridge that never even got designed, much less built. You know, that's over a half a billion dollars in wasted money done by this state government. So why should I trust them with another $3 billion a year? That's all I have to say. If anybody else has a comment, otherwise we'll move on.
I didn't mention for the record, because the folks at home don't know this, but you all received an email from Ms. Horn, so that's submitted for the record. And you have a copy in front of you.
Okay. Should have had Amber read that, but that's all right.
Okay.
Okay, so we're done with that. Unless.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, everybody.
Unless somebody wants to pull something, I'd take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Ayd, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Is there any discussion? Call roll, please.
Commissioner Ayd?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Magelberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. So we're to Communications. Mr. Manager?
Thank you. First, I have Mr. Lewis give a couple of updates on a couple of projects that are going on in the community.
John.
Which one?
Thanks for the question. Wasn't really sure. I'm sure Phil was.
I'll introduce him later. I like that.
We'll just, how about we just go Lewis and Clark?
Oh. Who's who on which one?
So we thought, three updates, one on the Cove, one on smoke testing in Oregon City, and then today's start of public comment on our AMS4 and a report, which is wonderful reading material, but I just wanted to mention it as well. So whether I need much for slides here, I don't really know, but I really felt like we should give you an update on the Cove moving forward. If you've been along the Cove, you know that that's moving forward. The signage right now that's indicated and the permitting that we've issued so far has indicated that they would be done with their work by October 31st. And we're, that's becoming obviously clear that that's not going to be when they're done. And unlike public projects, this is a development project, we really have very little, very few tools in our toolbox to press them for completion of a project, especially when it impacts the public right of way. This project, because of the nature of it being on both sides of the roadway with all the structural fill, the cut and fill on this project, it really kind of obligated for a safe worksite for Main Street Extension to be closed. So we're struggling. We're continuing to work with that developer to find assurances of some sort that aren't necessarily, I don't think, time is our big issue, I think. We think the work is going, and from our observation, the work is going well. It's just between weather and starting late in the season, they started later than I think they wanted to start. So we've got a project out there that's, we're beyond the point of no return, and we expect to continue to work with this developer to help that project get complete. But I think we're looking at more of a mid-January, maybe mid-February completion date as far as we can tell today.
When you say completion date, you mean when you can reopen Main Street?
That's correct. I'm talking about reopening of Main Street, not completion. So that's a good clarification. So that would include the cut and embankment that's happened in the North Park and moving all that earthwork, right? Doing all that earthwork as well as the utilities, and then eventually building the roundabout. So I just felt like we've, you know, we've been moving down a path, working with the developer. Schedules change, weather is, and this one's going to be an impact, and I don't think it's unreasonable. It's just different, and I just wanted to give you the update. So if you've got any questions, we've got the website that Grand Peaks has actually put together with some progress photos. I have some other photos if we wanted to look at those too, but mainly, it's just wanting to keep you informed on that. We can bring it back to you every six weeks or something like that if that makes sense for you.
I was just down at the site last week, chatted with one of the senior vice presidents of the company, and they said they're going full bore and they aren't stopping until they're done. So, you know.
It's kind of the way we see it as well. It's just this kind of expectation for them to get moving quicker and moving more dirt than maybe they've moved. But they've got, it's a complex site. You know, the dirt that they are moving, they need to mix that dirt. They found a lot more concrete in it than they intended. In fact, significantly more concrete than they had intended. So their concrete crusher that was originally planned, they're talking about something much more robust that can do more concrete crushing so that they can actually use that on the site and hopefully help them with some of that winter time earthwork, which is going to be a challenge. Okay? So that's the update on the Cove project. Also wanted to acknowledge that, I don't know if it's appropriate for tonight's, for tonight's meeting, given the topics before, but we're doing smoke testing in Oregon City. A little different kind of smoke.
You know, I was looking at that. I'm saying, what? Smoke testing?
This is a different kind of smoke altogether, but it's a smoke that, it's a process that we do in the industry to test and figure out what, where our imperfections are with our sanitary sewer system. So we've hired a contractor to, actually, you authorized the work to happen, so thank you for that because it does help us figure out where some of our biggest problems are with our sanitary sewer system. So most of this work happens in the McLaughlin neighborhood, some up in the Rivercrest neighborhood, and then further out, I can't remember, Gaffney Lane neighborhood. So we've provided a lot of notice on this, and there's door hanger notices, but even the first day, we still got the fire department out there because somebody had smoke in their home. So we're going to see those, we're trying to deal with those, and it's, that's part of the reason why I'm just announcing it tonight, is another public forum of noticing that we're busy providing maintenance to your utilities.
I have seen notices all over social media, so, you know, you guys are doing a good job as far as getting the word out there, and you can never reach 100% of the people ever.
Well, thanks to police. Jim Band has lots of friends on his Facebook account, so we've shared it that way, so.
All through them?
Thank Oregon City PD helped us out quite a bit there. Last but not least is we have NPDES, which is National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, MS4, which is.
Wake me up when you get done.
Yeah, municipal separated storm sewer system. So we have a permit from DEQ to manage stormwater in Oregon City, and it's a pretty robust program. One of the requirements is an annual report, and part of the requirement of that is that we obtain public input. It's one of those requirements that we put on our website and we publish, but gets very little interest. It's a good report, but, you know, good bedtime reading material. How's that? So I just wanted to share that it's out there today. I think it's got a month of public input, and that's a DEQ requirement. So it's good work.
Thanks, sir.
We are, the city is hosting the Clackamas Cities Association Dinner this month. It is on Tuesday, October 25th. It begins at 5:30. There'll be a presentation by Library Director Cole and the project manager for the Carnegie Edition and Rehabilitation Project, Charles Baumann, followed by a tour. It's $40 to attend the dinner, and please contact Jamie Reed up in our City Recorder's office to RSVP to that event. office to RSVP to that event. Quick library update, without Mo, I'm going to try and do this, so.
Go right ahead.
It won't be as great. The library is currently closed for the move into, into the Carnegie. It's closed from today through the 11th. It'll reopen on October 12th. During this time, staff will be moving everything back into the, the old Carnegie Library and getting ready for the opening. And they also have an all-staff, all Clackamas County Library training on one of those days. And then just a reminder that the, the library grand opening will be head on, will be held on Saturday, October 15th from 12 to 3:00. So hopefully everyone can come out and, and see the facility. It'd be great to see, it looks wonderful inside, so once it's all put together, it'll be even, even more amazing. And I'm sure this is important to you, but probably very important for Police Chief over there and his guys. The fire station across from John Adams will hold open house at the same time, so I'm sure his guys will be excited to attend that as well. And then last but not least, I do want to introduce, Phil Lewis is our new Community Services Director. Very excited to have Phil on board. He joins us, he had a long experience with the city of Portland, as well as the Director for Northwest County Parks and Rec District. Just really excited, we've got all of Parks Community Services staffed up right now to their full staffing, which is exciting. So really just, Phil brings just a great temperament, a lot of great experience, a lot of great energy and ideas, so I just really look forward to hitting the ground running and, and learning about Oregon City. So once again, welcome, Phil.
Thank you very much.
And that does conclude my presentation for tonight.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Okay, let's see. I went to the Metro meeting and that was about how do we find funding for regional transportation challenges. It was really well attended, I'd say. There's a couple hundred people there, very broad base of folks. And so we'll see where that goes. We definitely have funding challenges for some of the major infrastructure pieces. One of them would be light rail, additional legs of light rail. So that'll be evolving over at least another year or so, as they figure out what, what it looks like and, and what, more importantly, what people would support. So we also, I also attended the Oregon City Business Lines Urban Renewal Discussion, which was excellent and very informative to understand how that works. I went to the League of Oregon City Conference with several of my other commissioners, was really a good conference and learned a lot, brought back a lot of good ideas, I think. Went to the Economic Restructuring Committee of the Main Street and they're really trying, they have their new RARE student with them now, first day on the job yesterday. So one of her first challenges is going to be trying to get some of the privately held parking lots available for evening and weekend parking, so pretty aggressive campaign there.
What is the acronym RARE?
Rural Assistance for...
RARE charisma?
Yeah, it is. It's just a great program. Rural Assistance for Research something or other, anyway. Let's see, what else? I think that's pretty much it for now.
Commissioner Shaw?
Let's see, attended the Oregon Watershed, Oregon City Watershed Council fundraiser, which was out at the Beaver Creek Grange. And that has to do with any of the watershed that goes into the Willamette River. And Mr. John Runyon was out there, who is our consultant that's working on the Cove project with Mr. Darrow. So anyway, pretty good. And then last Thursday, I think it was last Thursday night, oh no, it was the Thursday night after our last meeting, I got called out to a Boy Scout group out in, on Hennessy to, last year I did it. They called me out and wanted to know, you know, what does a city commissioner do? So I, I got to fill them in on that. And then this last Thursday, these little guys wanted to know about the Legacy Project. So Christina and, and... Christine and Kelly.
Kelly.
Gave me all the materials I needed out there and went out there and talked to them for quite a while and, and, you know, three or four of them said, "Well, you know, we're going to be Eagle Scouts, so any, any projects we can do there?" I'm sitting there, "Here's my card," you know, so got that going. Went to the National Day of Remembrance up at the cemetery too for the, I don't think it was for the murdered children, was it? I thought it was, you know, on the program, it just said National Day of Remembrance. So up at the cemetery and that was very nice. OCBA, Urban Renewal, finally learned something about Urban Renewal. League of Cities down in Salem with Renata and Nancy there. So they went to the Atkinson Church ribbon cutting with the mayor on Sunday.
And thank you for still calling it Atkinson.
I know. And...
They changed the name.
Yeah.
But we still call it Atkinson.
Well, it will still have, Atkinson's actually on the side of the church.
Yeah.
It will always be Atkinson.
Yeah. And then CIC, did the CIC Monday night and some activity there, so that's it.
Stride?
Yeah, really quickly. I also attended the League of Oregon Cities Conference, I need my glasses, and learned about innovative housing opportunities. They had an awesome tourism presentation, got a million notes. And we also, we accepted this Gold Standard Award by Safety Award from City County Insurance, recognizing Oregon City for excellence in safety practices resulting in few or no, non-occupational hazards, or injuries, excuse me. So kudos to our staff for, you know, creating conditions in an atmosphere and a training to keep us safe on the job. What?
The rate's low too.
Oh. So anyway, that's KD, take on? And then I also attended today a legislative forum with, with state representative candidates concerning human services programs and needs in the county related to people, seniors and others with disabilities, domestic violence and so forth. So it was very good. The representatives from all over the state were, were there telling us what they think. And then also following that, I attended a community meeting with several interested community members in discussing solutions and options to address the homeless issues in our community. And it was very intense, productive meeting, I thought. Also attended the Annual Day of Observance for Parents of Murdered Children, so, and I'm sure there are other things that I can't think of at the moment.
Commissioner Smith?
Always something going on.
I've done nothing. I'm slacking off. I've been teaching, I've been teaching, I've done a few ghost tours. I did a parade last weekend, but that's about it. No, no big meetings.
Okay, so...
I have five meetings left.
And wow. I wish to tell my Chris.
Is that right? Five, I think five.
So, single-digit bid. So I, I've had a few things, but I've been mostly busy working with a group of folks here in Oregon City to defeat Measure 3-514. I'm not out of line by talking about this from here, am I?
Not at all.
Okay. So this is the ballot measure that's on, the November ballot, that would basically kill urban renewal and our ability to use urban renewal to do the kinds of good things that we're doing, not only downtown, but hopefully at some time on the north end, as well as the possibility in the future of using urban renewal at the Legacy Project, should we determine that that would be necessary. So as, from me personally, as the mayor, I would say to you folks out there in the community, this is a badly crafted measure and it, it would do horrible damage to the economy of Oregon City and I urge you to vote no. I attended, I did not go to the League of Oregon Cities Conference, but I did go down for a couple hours for a meeting of the, the mayors and, and city councilors from the general Clackamas County area to talk about, what were you talking about?
Bylaws. Change to the bylaws.
Oh, oh, to talk about the bylaws for C4. And for those of you who don't know, C4 stands for the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee. It was originally designed to have us work together, kind of like Washington County does, to move transportation projects forward and, and receive that funding. It is since, over the years, and I'm a founding member of C4, has kind of morphed into some kind of more other organization and so the mayors and city councilors of our cities are trying to, to get some generalized rules back in place that kind of trim that down and get us back to our original mission. Beyond that, I, it's been a pretty light couple of weeks as far as the city's concerned, not necessarily in private business or in politics, but I would also urge folks, we have a police bond, vote out there, please vote yes on the, on the police bond. It's not going to raise your taxes. It's just going to allow us to get started on our, in a police facility and I would encourage you to vote yes on that as well.
And I have been working on that, actually.
Well, I have too.
It occurs to me.
I've been up putting up signs.
Lot of PAC meetings for that.
Yes.
So if there is nothing else for the good of the order, we're adjourned.